Council President Block, as we near the end of the year, and as we all know, this year was an election year, and the democratic process has been completed, and we have two new council members coming on to the council, but I can tell you, having worked now for the city of Fishers for the better part of 15 years, I've served under town councils, I've served under city councils, and every single individual council member makes quite a sacrifice to sit where you do. I was talking to an individual the other day, and this person I trust a great deal, we were talking about city council life, and this individual said, "The best day of a city council member's career is the election night," because once you get elected, you realize the thankless job that is before you, which is to filter what you think is in the best interest of your community, to answer constituents' concerns, to make difficult decisions when things are not as black and white as we all think it is out here, and to really be in the shadows of the mayor at the time who's running around doing lord knows what. We have two council members who will be exiting after tonight's council meeting, and we wanted to provide a small token of appreciation on behalf of the entire city for all the work that you've done, and so first, I'd like to say a few comments about Rich Block, if I could. Rich is the true testament to a reluctant politician. Politics was not in his blood, not in his DNA, it's not what he wanted, but he cared an awful lot about this community, and wanted to provide his insights, his expertise, and his experiences, to make Fishers a better place, and I can tell you unequivocally, he has done that. For those of you that maybe were curious about what in particular Rich's passions were on the city council, he was very passionate and very astute about economic development, and really helped us sharpen our pencil, and really understand what, from a real estate's perspective, what's in the best interest of the community, and so tonight, Rich, we want to provide you a small token of appreciation. This is a small plaque with some of the more memorable things that have occurred in your time, including some of the economic development projects we've had. There is a spike from the railroad.
I nabbed four of those.
Also, a magazine cover where Money Magazine named us the number one place to live, and we are grateful for all the work that you've done, and certainly will miss you, but appreciate your friendship and your contribution to the city. So come on down and get your... Next up, Eric Mohler, young man who had a passion for trying to see Fishers become more innovative, more creative, and more entrepreneurial. In several of the conversations that I had with Eric over his tenure at the city of Fishers, he was really a champion behind the scenes about Launch Fishers, about bringing technology into our community in unique and different ways. In many ways, Eric was very much the reason behind the positive relationship between the school board and the city of Fishers, making sure that there was open lines of communication. Both he and Todd Zimmerman founded a scholarship program within our schools that I think is extraordinary, and really excited to continue to work with Eric long-term and just brainstorm when we get together about how we can become more environmentally conscious, and really just did some really innovative work here. So Eric, on behalf of the city of Fishers, thank you for your service as well. The next one is for someone who is actually now about to start the political journey that I'm very excited about. Leah McGrath came to the city of Fishers nearing the beginning of my first term as mayor. As I said over the weekend, I got to know Leah down at the State House, where she was advocating on behalf of cities and towns across the state of Indiana. She may not remember this, but I actually remember the first time I actually interacted with Leah. I was sitting in a legislative meeting, we were negotiating, believe it or not, small cell tower sites, which is still part of my everyday work, and here comes this fiery, redheaded woman into the meeting and just starts articulating and arguing with the telecom industry like I've never seen before, and I thought, "Holy cow, who is this person?" And it left an impression on me, and so when we had the opportunity to try to bring someone into the organization that had a passion to really engage our community in ways that we hadn't, that brought a different lens, that could articulate the vision of what our community is aspiring to become, unquestionably, I only called one person, and Leah has come in, and her impact will be felt for years to come in the city of Fishers, I'm sure of that. Some of the accomplishments under Leah's belt, I think she ran what I think is probably the best model of community engagement when it comes to the nickel plate trail. Very difficult and controversial issue, she was able to turn that and create what I think was something that the community was truly excited about. Spark Fishers reinventing a community tradition that will live on for decades to come. Her work with Cecilia Kobel on the ADA community is really a best model, and has been awarded by the governor and recognized by the governor, and so there's been a variety of things time and time again, where when we think about that bridge to our residents, when we think about articulating the vision of our community, Leah did that in spades. She's now about to enter into the private sector and hopefully back into the public sector in a different format, and I couldn't be more thrilled for her, and I couldn't be more grateful for her time here with the city of Fishers. So with that, Leah, come on up.
While the pictures are being taken with Leah and the mayor, on behalf of the council, Leah, we would also like to recognize you and thank you for everything you've done. We're excited for your future and for Indiana, but I know you spent a lot of time with us in the planning commission and just in planning in general. I think we all are excited as the district now takes shape, and for that, we'd like to give you a little gift certificate so you and your husband or family can go enjoy. Thank you. Very nice, thank you. All right.
Rich, I just want to say a few words. I just want to thank Eric and Rich for their passion and service to our community as the first city council here. You should be very proud of everything that you have been a part of these last five years. Fishers has had an amazing journey, a successful journey, and you have a lot to be proud of, and we're definitely going to miss you, and we want to thank you for everything that you've done and for your friendship. It's been really fun getting to know you, and it's been a pleasure working with the two of you. And Leah, I just also want to say thank you for everything that you have done. It's been also a pleasure working with you through the Arts Commission, Arts and Culture Commission, through the Fishers Advisory Committee on Disability. You're going to be greatly missed, and we wish you all the best with your future endeavors.
Thank you, Cecilia. Do each council member want to say something? No, okay, I'm joking.
We're saving it for the end.
All right. I guess we can probably cut it at this point. Yeah, thank you all. All right, any proclamations? Okay, Finance Committee, I don't think Matt John, correct?
Correct.
No report?
No report.
Consent agenda?
Motion approved.
I think John beat you. So motion by John's...
Ha ha. Gotcha.
Second by Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. I know we have quite a few people here for items eight and nine, so let's move eight and nine before seven, if we may, and Megan, are you going to present? We'll save you all of about three minutes.
Good evening, council. For the record, Megan Baumgartner, Director of Economic Development. Since we have moved up items eight and nine, there's two items here that go together. They both relate to the Mattingly Construction Project that is before you tonight for consideration. Steve Mattingly, who is a local resident in Fishers area and has his company here, Mattingly Construction, approached the city a few months ago about an opportunity to purchase additional land that was previously owned by Sun King Brewery when they changed their plans to move up to the yard. That was an opportunity to bring some additional build-to-suit and owner-occupied buildings to Fishers. We worked closely with him, as well as three different prospect companies, to put a vision together that really is, we think, creative to local entrepreneurs. It brings the opportunity for smaller office space and starts some additional development in the Kincade area. The Fishers Gateway Park is what it's referred to now. Steve is here tonight, along with three of the prospect companies, and Steve, if you'd like to come up and say a couple of words to council about this project and...
Thank you. Didn't plan on saying this, or anything, but yeah, we're excited about this opportunity.
Does he need to introduce himself officially?
Steve Mattingly, Mattingly Construction.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyway, yeah, we were fortunate enough to acquire the property from Kincade, or from Sun King, the 12 acres, and in looking on what I thought was a need for the area, we're for small businesses to own their building, and we have three prospective clients right now that are just that. They're professionals, they're jobs that we would want in Fishers, they're buildings that are from 8,000 to 14,000 square feet, and we're excited about it. It's a great opportunity. I think it's great for Fishers.
Thank you, Steve.
So the first item, item nine, which is the resolution approving the economic development agreement, that is asking for the council's approval of an abatement that would apply to these three particular buildings along the three-acre parcel that Steve has already worked with our team on to replat. And then the second item is the declaratory resolution beginning the abatement process for his entire property. I'm happy to answer any questions, and also as part of his incentive agreement, we are requesting a waiver of his impact fees for that project, but not the local permitting fees.
Thank you, Megan. Questions from council? Comments?
No questions or comments, I'll make a motion to approve.
So we need to take these...
Item eight.
Motion to approve by Pete for item eight. Second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item nine.
Make a motion to approve item nine if there's no comments or questions.
Okay. Motion by Pete, second by Todd. Again, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Congratulations.
Good luck, everybody.
We'll look forward to seeing buildings soon.
Yep.
Thank you. So we are going to jump back to item seven. Sorry to mess you up there, Megan.
Thank you. So item seven is really the third piece of the large 116th Street project that we first brought back to council and announced a year ago. The plan all along, working with First Internet Bank and CRG and Browning Investments, has been to bring a boutique hotel to this area. The city has been working with Browning Investments to bring what looks like will be a Hilton Tapestry Hotel, which will be a boutique brand and feel, but will have the access and amenities that a typical Hilton Garden, or not Hilton Garden, a Hilton Hotel would have. 116 rooms, a $21 million investment. This will have access to the parking garage as well, and then again is right on the trail. We're asking for an incentive package that includes $2.1 million to offset construction costs. This will come from existing TIF funds, as well as a waiver of impact and permitting fees. Since the trail construction is still underway and the plans are still being developed, we also have included an up to $100,000 allocation for them in the event that somehow the trail construction costs them any sort of additional funds to build their building. Browning Investments is here tonight, and Adam, you'd like to come up and say a few words?
Thank you, Megan. Good evening, councilors. Adam Chavers with Browning Investments. Joined here tonight with Door Hotels, Kelly Tabling. Just wanted to say thank you very much for your consideration of the project agreement and support of this sort of third installment of what will be sort of the delivery into reality of this sort of ambitious vision that everyone put together here for the Nickel Plate District. So we're excited for this project. We think that it's unique. It is the smallest of the three pieces, but we think that good things come in small packages and very, very tight places as we try to wedge this in between the trail construction as well as the parking garage construction. So thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Questions of council?
No questions. I'm going to make a motion to approve. Second.
All right, motion to approve by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Doing a good job, Megan.
It's a marathon, not a sprint.
Item 10.
Item 10 is a request to approve an economic development agreement with Strongbox Commercial. So this is for the northwest corner of 96th Street and Lantern, a former Marsh Grocery Store site. The city has been working with Strongbox and the owner of that property for a while to develop a project that's going to lend itself to some redevelopment efforts along 96th Street, and then also be cognizant of the existing buildings and businesses that are in that area, and we think that we've come up with a really great solution. Strongbox is working through their agreement process with a new user to take 60,000 square feet of the existing 80,000 square feet, so they will demolish 20,000 square feet of that existing building completely, redo the facade, and plan about $7 million worth of investment in improving the parking lot and landscaping. They also plan a 10,000-square-foot retail outlot, and as part of this project, the city of Fishers is requesting, or we're requesting, a waiver of impact and permitting fees for that front 10,000-square-foot building. In exchange for that, Strongbox has committed to work with our police department and purchase four license plate readers to set up the city's first license plate reader program along 96th Street. So really, again, reinforcing the corridor and making a strong stance here, they will probably...
Megan, if I could, I just want to be clear about these license plate readers. This is not a, if you run through the red, the stoplight, you're going to get a ticket. This is about if we have criminal activity down there, we'll have the opportunity to draw on this data and really start to put together really pretty strong technological shield down there on 96th Street, and this group has been very good to work with us on thoughtful design of this intersection, so that we can really ensure that everyone that's down there is having a safe, and that along with the 96th Street reconstruction that we're going to be doing. We think this is the first step to really starting to reinvigorate and revitalize a key corridor here in Fishers.
So again, the request for the waiver of impact and permitting fees is just for that 10,000-square-foot building, and then again, in exchange for that, the implementation of the license plate reader program. They will begin their rezone process with our planning team as well, and that will hopefully lead to us being able to announce the user that'll go into that space in the next couple of months. Happy to answer any questions.
Not really a question, Megan, as much as a comment. So I had the fortune to be out in Los Angeles this last week at a conference, doesn't make a difference what the conference was, but I was with, you know, a number of different communities, many of them from Indiana when the news broke, okay? Many of them which have Marsh Stores which are sitting idle, right? And we announced that we had something to do with a Marsh Store, and they all looked at me like, "What are you guys doing that we can't do in the rest of Indiana?" And my comment back to them was, "A great staff and a great mayor." So my hats are off to you guys, because I know these sites are a challenge, and, you know, I continue to applaud the efforts of not only you guys in the economic development and the mayor's office, but these are challenged sites to get, to find the right mix to go into these areas, and I can't compliment you guys enough for finding, really what I think is just going to be a gangbuster development that goes on in there, and really kind of continue to enhance that 96th Street corridor, so.
I want to state that I've been in communities where they've used the license plates readers to enhance the safety within their communities, and I'm very thankful that Strongbox is willing to help us in this manner and to help us down on 96th Street. I'm hoping that we can expand that effort on 96th Street as we continue to work on development down there. So thank you for working with them on that, and thanks to Strongbox to allowing this to move forward.
I'm going to add one last comment, too, because I think sometimes the public misses what happens through the process, and I know that you've worked tirelessly, probably on four or five different concept plans, and gotten feedback from council, from the mayor staff.
Months.
Months, and yeah, and so I think this is an example that I think we've come up with, or you've come up with, a plan that really does hit the mark, and I appreciate that, but I think that for many, it's lost on how much time and effort it does take, so thank you. Is there any further comments?
I have one. I certainly appreciate the work of Megan and the mayor and everything tonight, but if we all recall, we actually put some constraints on this property to make sure it wouldn't be converted into something else that they went and had to come back to us, and that was something that was really important. Some folks really thought that was concerning, that we were taking away property owners' rights, and, you know, but I think it's worked out very well in this instance, and for me in my world, I get more concerned about my neighbors' property rights rather than some developers' property rights, quite frankly. And this is a way that we're able to kind of land that plane, be able to do that, have a good development, and make sure that it's a great amenity for our community. So with that in mind, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion...
I'll second that, John.
Okay. Motion to approve by John, seconded by Pete. You need to work on yourself, Pete. Okay.
He had the floor.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. Item 11, Megan.
This is the second step in an abatement approval for 10-300 Kincade. That is currently known as Gateway One. Previously was the home of Roche when they were doing their construction, and has been a vacant building ever since Roche left in January of 2017. A year ago, I believe, council approved the declaratory resolution, starting the abatement approval process for this site. So under Indiana state law, this building is an eligible building for a vacant building tax abatement. We've been entertaining various prospect tenants in that building and working closely with the building owners for quite some time, and I think that this step in taking the confirmatory resolution really is kind of signaling to the development world and these tenants that this is something that the city of Fishers supports, and then hopefully we get this building filled. There are no tenants who have signed on any sort of lease at this building yet, so that's why in our statement of benefits for this, the building owners have kind of post-stated this to 2021 for an abatement to kick in. Happy to answer any questions. I think we need to have a public hearing as well.
Correct. So this is a public hearing. If there are members of the public who wish to come forward to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be given three minutes in which to speak. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Questions, comments from council?
It's 10 years, 100% for the vacant building tax abatement.
Could we have a [inaudible]?
Yes.
I thought it was.
I apologize. I thought that I had included that on there, but yes, we will for sure do that. I think it's in the resolution.
I thought I saw it.
It's in the resolution.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
Yeah, it's a resolution.
We'll make sure that it's updated before we provide it to the county.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. Is there a second? Any further? Okay, second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good.
Yeah, just so you know, Brian is in section four of the resolution.
In Exhibit B.
Item 12, is this you again, Megan?
It is. This is another confirmatory resolution. We started the declaratory and abatement approval process at last month's council meeting for the hub-and-spoke development along 106th Street. We had approved the project agreement about a year ago for hub-and-spoke, and again, as they get closer to completion of their building, finalizing the abatement process with our confirmatory resolution in a public hearing.
All right, so this is a public hearing. If there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please raise your hand. You'll be given three minutes in which to speak. Anybody? We will close the public hearing. Questions, comments from council?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete, second by Todd. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item 13.
This is a request for an amendment to a project agreement with AMP West. About a year ago, we brought this kind of sister project to the AMP Northwest Project, which is Flexware Innovations' new corporate headquarters. They worked with us to develop a site plan to fill the space kind of northwest of the fire station out here on the outside of the municipal ellipse. That type, that site is small and went through various versions of working with our engineering and planning teams to get a site plan that worked. So, this amendment is a request to extend their closing date, previously April of 2019 to June of 2020.
Okay, this is not a public hearing. Any questions or comments from council?
Oh, that's right. Thank you. We're also, because they anticipate the size of their building increasing slightly for them to meet their parking ratios, we're giving them a parking easement to the Dog Park parking lot, which is the parking lot adjacent to the Depot's parking, Dog Park. So, that's a public parking lot that the city owns. So, there aren't going to be any sort of designated spots there. We're just going to have an easement in place saying that people and tenants in that building can park there. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. John?
Second.
Second? I just wanted to remind you, John. All right. Motion to approve by Pete, second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Item 14.
This is also related to the AMP West project. As part of that original project agreement, we approved an abatement. So, this is just the first step in the abatement approval process for the declaratory resolution. We did provide notice to the assessor's office that we anticipate moving forward with this.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Pete. Is there a second? Second by Selena. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Thank you. All right, 15.
Promise this is my last one. This is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Fishers and the Humane Society of Hamilton County. Hamilton County announced a couple of years ago their intent to build their new facility along 106th Street and Hague Road. As part of that process, they have requested a waiver of impact and permitting fees for this site. And I believe some representatives from the Humane Society are here tonight if you'd like to come up and say a few words.
Hello. Good evening. Thanks for having us here. Very excited to give you an update, really quick and short, and some renderings of the new facility, if you've not had an opportunity to see the design and some materials that we'll leave behind, our case for support. But just real quickly, as she shared, we, we actually launched our capital campaign, a $12 million capital campaign to build our new facility, a state-of-the-art facility that will certainly be unlike any other in the state of Indiana and one of the best in the United States, and very proud as a Fishers resident to say that it's going to be in my city. But we launched that campaign in November of 2018. And I'm very excited to say that as of right now, we're just over 11.5 million toward our goal. And we have a stretch goal of now 14, where we'd like to have 2 million in an operating endowment to help us continue to operate and sustain our operation. So, there's all kinds of amazing renderings here for you guys to take a look at, and I'll give you these. So, your waiver of those fees will obviously have a huge impact on helping us invest what we need to, to continue to be not just your Humane Society for Hamilton County, but we are the service provider for animal control services to Fishers and all the municipalities in Hamilton County. So, it's, it's critical that we invest all that we can into this and make it the best that we can. And we really appreciate your support.
Thank you, Rebecca. Questions, comments from council?
The only thing I'd say is, thank you for coming, Rebecca. And I know you and I've talked before, and I think you've talked to other council members, too. So, we appreciate, sorry, it's cold season.
I'm sorry.
But I appreciate all the efforts that you've done to put together a first-class building. I think it'll look wonderful and, and really excited about the, almost the new building. So, you get to fit the size and shape and everything on the inside that you need for the services that you provide.
Absolutely. We couldn't be happier with the design that current architecture's put together. Meyer Nagum has, is taking the lead, obviously, with the construction. It's going to be a jewel in our crown. I'm excited to be a part of it and, and be a part of this legacy that we're going to leave for animals, not just here in Hamilton County, but all Hoosier animals will benefit.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Thank you.
No, they're comments. I'd make a motion to approve. And I'll second that.
Motion to approve by David, second by Pete. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Congrats.
Thank you so much. Free kittens for everyone.
No.
No, thank you.
You're going away for President Rich and Eric and Leah.
Oh, my. I've got a cat I need to get rid of. All right. Item 16. Is this?
I gotta give Eric credit. He was out at 3:45 this morning plowing snow.
Oh, my.
He's really excited that it's a council night. Yeah, he should be out plowing snow. He'll be back out.
We will. Good evening, Eric. Pathway Director of Public Works. I'm here seeking an amendment to part of Fisher's city code related to special events, specifically item or area 35.3. In March of 2017, the Fishers Council adopted an ordinance of 032017B, which established a fee schedule for rental services and labor provided by my Department of Public Works and how we assist permittees in special event permits. After two years of this operation, we're seeking a simple modification to front-load the permitting process with a $50 minimum charge for all special event permits. And what this will do is capture the smaller events that don't rise to level paying for my labor to go out to drop off cones and barricades. A lot of the larger permits pay for themselves, the 5Ks and stuff like that. It's not an issue. It's just the smaller events that we're running into problems with where we're, we're paying for everything for, that they're asking for. This $50 fee will include some cones and barricades and the labor, so that, that'll cover all of our bases. All additional supplies and activities and materials are in accordance with the existing fee that was approved. So, we're not asking for any changes or increases there. We're just asking to cover this on the front end of the permitting process. Staff is asking approval of this amendment and suspend the rules and pass on first reading.
Thank you, Eric. So, is this a public hearing?
No public hearing.
Okay, no public hearing. Any questions, comments?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules and approve on first reading.
Motion, motion to approve by Pete, second by-
Suspend the rules.
I understand. To suspend the rules by Pete, second by Eric. All in favor of suspending the rules?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
And I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. A motion to approve now by Pete, second by Eric. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Eric, go back to work.
Thanks, Eric.
Thank you. Item 17. Mr. Bagado.
Good evening, City Council. For the record, Tony Bagado, Director of Planning and Zoning. And I'll be presenting the next three items. So, the first item before you is ordinance 121619, and this is Woods of Britain Phase II PUD. This is a proposed amendment to a PUD that's currently zoned PUDM, which is for mixed use. But this PUD off of 37 is designated for industrial or commercial use. With the changes coming to State Road 37 and limited access to this site, this property has not sold as commercial. So, we were approached several months ago about the potential of expanding the existing apartment complex to the east there to add additional units. So, it's a 5.33 acre site where they're looking to add two new buildings that would total 128 units with some amenities, like a gym in this area, as well as parking to service this area. There is a, currently a private road that will connect to the existing apartment complex if approved, and then will lead into this private road, which could potentially become public as part of our pursuit for public, private roads that act as public roads. And this would be one that we would consider in the future as being a public road. But they would connect to that, which would also provide a secondary access for the existing apartment complex, which is over 500 units. And again, part of the rezone would convert that to residential. I will also note, as part of the change from State Road 37 and the noise impacts, there is going to be a sound mitigation wall for a portion of this area that would also limit visibility of this site if it became commercial. So, when we were, again, presented with this, staff thought it was a good proposal for this area. Here is a design of the project. This architecture was reviewed by our Architectural View Committee through the PUD process. Pretty modern architecture, and staff believes this was supportive by staff as well as the architectural, the PUD committee. Here's another rendering of the project. This went through our Plan Commission with no discussion from the public process, a public hearing, and it was unanimously supported. So, with that, staff is here recommending approval for final reading. And any questions, as well as the petitioners here and the representative to give a presentation as well?
Thank you.
Can you hear me? On our 2040 plan, up along the 37 corridor, it says, it shows special study area. So, it didn't, you know, as we were looking at this and exhaustive, exhaustive research and, and conversation through that, we didn't look at that as particularly a residential area. And as that corridor develops with the 37 initiative, with the State Road 37 redevelopment, I think this is an opportunity where we are molding and shaping the future. And that's an economic corridor right there. And I just think, I might not be opposed to this down the road if once 37's done and it sits there for a long time and there's no, maybe no commercial development there. However, I just think it's short-sighted to, to stop at apartments right now as the decision before we see this fully develop along 37. So, I think this is a vital economic corridor for us. And I just don't think this is the right time to do that. So, you know, I'll, I'll be opposed today.
Before we ask others on council for comments, does the petitioner want to say anything? Yep.
Good evening, Mr. President. Members of the City Council. For the record, my name is Steve Harden. I'm a partner of the law firm of Vagary Baker Daniels. And I'm pleased to be here representing Regency Windsor. And from Regency Windsor is Mr. Phil Lambert and his son Eric Lambert are here. They are longtime investors, first movers here in Fishers. They are the owners and original developers of Sun Blessed here in downtown Fishers, approximately 80 acres or so of development that's about 30 years old. They also developed Sun Lake Apartments on State Road 37, as well as Woods of Britain. Those three projects, I think, generate about $2.5 million in property taxes here in the City of Fishers every year. And so, they're investors and developers. They're not building to sell right away. Their long-term commitment to Fishers is probably unparalleled for what they have done so far with the community. Tony's right. When this was, this first was presented as trying to sort through both from the owners of the property, trying to determine what to do with this site, it, it, it is not something that has come about in a quick manner. This was originally zoned, and I'm not going to remember this exactly right, but I believe it's been at least 15 years and probably more. It might have gone back to 2001, which before that, it was a golf course. And then, it was rezoned for commercial uses, I believe, as 2001, 2004. And if, and I'll put the- So, as you can see, most of the rest of the development is happening along the southern area here, where there's the commercial development that's pulled over the last decade or so. This land, compared to your land, was already fairly constrained because of an access issue. So, you couldn't get right to it. Most retail development wants to be able to keep the customers' eyes at the front, at the front door and where the signage is. And here, even with the access on 37, it has not found to be home of any viable commercial development for us, I think, for the second, at least 15, maybe even longer years. With the 37 improvements, what we're going to now have is a restricted right-in, right-out access. Currently, it's a full access, and that northern 5.3 acres has been challenged to find any viable commercial development. And with the additional restriction now for the access, it makes it, from a commercial perspective, a lot more restrictive and significantly less viable. From an investment perspective in the community, it does a number of things. This development can seamlessly transition from the existing development that's there today. This will have about a $17 million economic investment in the community, a 5.3 acre site. If it was developed for single-story commercial retail uses, would be about $5.3 million. So, it's a significant boost in the assessed value, and that's shown by the existing developments that Regency has done over the years as well. This is anticipated to generate, just on this five-acre site, about $300,000 in additional taxes. I think we were asked during the Plan Commission process if this development was seeking any economic incentives from the city, and the answer was no. The, the other thing that this does from an economic development perspective, we do agree that this is an important corridor. But one of the things that it does, right now, there, you probably saw some of our material, this is the access currently for this site. And so, right now, any of the residents that live in the 500-unit development Woods of Britain, but then we get down to Fishers Marketplace, and after this access is now restricted, they have to lead their development going 141st, either come south of that and pass the school campuses, or come down on 37, and then go south or go east or west on 131st Street to get into development. So, with the new improvements to State Road 37, the access for this neighborhood is to be able to connect into Fishers Marketplace is very limited. On the flip side of that, with the development, you can see then with the access, with the two access points into the existing Woods of Britain, providing the ability for both pedestrian, bicycle, as well as the particular connectivity directly between the developments, making it more accessible for the commercial uses from all the existing residents in Woods of Britain, as well as leading traffic out on Cumberland as well as State Road 37. So, from an economic investment perspective, it's anticipated to generate three times the amount of investment into the community. It's anticipated to have additional improvement for the existing commercial development in Fishers Marketplace, right? Any, any ability to help support the businesses along State Road 37 during the 37 improvements has been a mantra for the city. The city has gotten way out in front of that, trying to help the local businesses who are going to see challenges as they, as the improvements are made. This is one of those opportunities to be able to provide a more streamlined connectivity, not only from a planning perspective, but from a business perspective, for those existing businesses within Fishers Marketplace. So, we have the improved access, improved traffic flow on the perimeter, the increased assessed value as well. And then, from a planning perspective, I think we also looked at it from what's the highest and best use. That's the question that's always before the City Council. What's the highest and best use? Even when it had better access, it was always pushed up at the northern part of the property. It wasn't a very appealing commercial development site. With the restricted access, it, it, it's even less so. And the likely type of development that the city can anticipate, hopefully, when you, when the city weighs that with the proposed development in front of you, it, it hopefully is a, is a, a good case to be made. The development team, before we began, sat down, met with the mayor, we met with the planning department, we went through the, there's three city council members on the Plan Commission. We had the PUD Committee, which was a unanimous vote in favor of the proposal based on the architecture and design. The, there was no remonstrance from the public at any step during the way. And then, at the Plan Commission, again, it was a unanimous favorable recommendation for all the bas- for all the basic planning reasons that we have. We often talk about that a good project that receives support and approval from the City Council typically are projects that have all three things. It's good planning, good government, and good business. From a planning perspective, to enhance the accessibility and circulation is a wonderful thing. You know, nowadays, we wouldn't do projects without providing connectivity and this body's talked a lot about that over the years. So here's an opportunity to correct something that's not, wasn't designed back in the day the way it would be today. So it's an opportunity to do good planning, to be able to expand a neighborhood that already is providing a place for young people as well as older people to live. I'm going to ask Mr. Lambert to come up in a moment just to share with you a little bit about his vision, who their residents are, so you can understand who this is being designed for. And then from a business, so from a business perspective, the current owner has not had other, you know, viable, appropriate type of commercial users reach out to them to want to purchase this site. And from the support for the existing development, both of those are real positives to be able to have this occur. From a government perspective, it's, again, it's providing a good connectivity and providing the enhanced investment as well to the community. I'm going to ask Phil Lambert to come up for a moment just to say hello. You might not know him yet, but they have been here for 30 years or more with their development. And just talk a little bit, Phil, about your vision for this and who your residents are and you anticipate living in this development.
Thank you, Steve. My name's Phil Lambert and I'm president of the Regency Windsor Management Company. And our fam, we are a small family company. We built Sun Blessed 30, 32 years ago. Sun Lake, maybe 28 years ago, and Woods Britain, 24 years ago about. And we've owned them ever since. We love this town and when I saw this site, when I was speaking to the seller of this site, what I saw was a site that's been vacant for a long time. And I saw an opportunity to enhance his customer clientele, the businesses in Fishers Marketplace, and to help us too. I thought it was a win-win situation because we had the unique advantage of being able to tie it into our site. And it's a large property, it's 521 apartments. We've got 980 residents there. And with this, we'd add maybe another couple hundred. So you're talking, you know, almost 1,100, you know, people that would have easy access into the Fishers Marketplace. So I thought it would help, it would help them, it would help us. In terms of our residents, if you're, if you want to look at people we rent to right now, you know, apartments, it's not like it used to be a long time ago where apartments were typically viewed as a starter home and then as people got older, they bought a house. It's not like that anymore. Apartment living is more of a lifestyle now. A lot of people are choosing apartments because they want to have more leisure time. At Woods of Britain right now, 25% of our people that live there are 65 or older, which is, which is, it didn't used to be that way, but right now, that's what it is. 35 to 50% are what we call young professionals, you know, 30 to 50 years old. And your starter families, you know, the children of our community, I would say it's about 25% of our current population there, so.
Phil, could you talk a little bit about, you have, your plan have elevators in these buildings, which is unusual for a lot of multi-family? Just compare and contrast maybe also the rents that you're anticipating for this development versus the neighboring one.
Okay, okay. Well, it's obviously going to be a different architectural style. We're not going to try and match the style that we have, but we do plan on managing it from Woods of Britain and those residents would have access to all of our amenities at Woods of Britain. The rents here will be $185 to $300 higher than our current, than at Woods of Britain. It's going to be much higher. It's going to be a higher-end property, it'll have elevators in the two buildings, which I think would appeal to an older clientele also. That and trash chutes, you know, no exterior dumpsters.
One other thing too, I know, we had some of the council members more interested than others about electronic vehicles. I don't know if there was any in the small print came out, but we did talk about it, Councilman Moeller, as we went through the project, that there was a desire, you found a kindred spirit in Mr. Lambert. They're planning to install electronic charging stations in the existing development.
We are, we are. As a matter of fact, we're putting some in at, we're looking into putting some in at Sun Blessed right now and we're going to put some in at Sun Lake and we would put some in here too. We're going to start off with, you know, infrastructure for like six and put in a couple spots initially, just see how it goes. We've had, we've had one person ask for it, but I figure, once we get them in there, there'll be more, so.
Thank you.
I was going to say, thank you Phil and Steve.
I think what I might suggest if we can, just allow council members to either ask questions or make comments and then you can speak to address those questions.
I just want to follow up. So Steve, I'm sorry, your first name again?
Phil.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your presentation, appreciate it. The comment about relieving traffic in the area, you can't add apartments into a restricted area, in a restricted access area and say that you're relieving traffic. That, that can't happen. Access can be taken care of in a multitude of ways into the, into the commercial development to the south and any development that would come can do that. So adding people in that tight space does not help traffic flow. That can't be. Walkability, I mean, all those things are good. I mean, that's what we're looking for with every project, but I just think it's a huge miss right now. The more I hear it, it's not that the project itself, like if it was someplace else, you know what I'm saying? If it wasn't right along 37, I have no problem with the project concept. So that's why, I just want to make sure I'm, you know, being clear with that. But we have one chance at developing the 37 corridor. One chance. And I just think it's a miss this early on before we even see what 37 does to take, you know, just to go to apartments. And I'm not saying it is a negative term, I'm saying you're taking a lot of more, a lot more people and trying to put them into there before we even know what the development along 37 is going to do for our community for the long run. So that's, I'll finish, I'm done talking about it, but I'm very much against this.
I just wanted to make a comment as well. I'm familiar with your properties and they have a very stellar reputation and they've been long-term, taken care of very well, managed very well and everything. I, I, you know, the project sounds interesting, but I am a little hesitant at this point to also approve this tonight. I would like to see the 37 corridor done before approving something right now. I just feel there's so much uncertainty and I think it would, it would be better once everything is complete there to kind of understand, you know, what, the traffic flow, the businesses that are there, you know, what's needed, what are our needs? So I'm going to be a no tonight.
Yes.
Yeah.
Left or right?
You know, I'm going to be against this too. Number one is the timing issue with 37 and I agree with Todd in that we're adding more people, more traffic in there. Based on some studies that have been done within our community, rather than apartments, at this point in time, I would rather see us putting in townhouses, townhomes that people can purchase. I think this is our need, probably more than apartments are within our community at this point in time. I'd rather see the 2040 study completed and the development of 37 completed before we go down this route. But I do like the concept of connectivity with the Fishers Marketplace.
Brad?
Steve, I think you guys have personally done a great job with it. As a serial entrepreneur, if you gave me that ground for a dollar, I wouldn't build any retail there because I know I want to survive. It's not going to succeed. The millennials want convenience and that's why McDonald's builds theirs on the breakfast side for convenience, to sell breakfast. It's unfortunate, they're getting lazier and lazier.
I take offense to that, Brad. That's ageism.
Right. But the convenience is what retail wants. So I think this is a good use of vacant ground. It's going to take five years to complete 37, so you guys are asking for this ground to sit vacant for this gentleman for another five years. I don't think that's fair when he's got a project that will benefit Fishers, go on to tax rolls, he's not asking for abatement or anything else that we give away tonight, millions of dollars. He hasn't asked for a dime from the city of Fishers. The other thing that was very interesting, sir, 25% over 65. We don't do a lot of traffic, Todd, we sit around and play bocce and stuff. But that is great and I really appreciate that because as we all know, over 20% of Fishers is over 65 and it's just going to keep increasing. So by you providing that, I'm sure you won't have any trouble filling that up, probably with the seniors more than anybody else. So I appreciate you bringing that project to Fishers, it'll help my generation with some more options besides the Del Webb. So I think you've done a good job with it. The traffic, since you're going to be cut off on 135th, there's not a lot of choice there. So I appreciate the project and I think it's a great project. Thank you very much.
Other questions, comments?
I'm also going to be opposed to this this evening and, you know, you're pulling at my heart with the EV chargers included, but for me, it's not about the form or function, it's just about the timing, you know? And I was one of the committee members serving on the 2040 Land Use Committee and we had no clarity on what the State Road 37 was going to look like, you know, in 2015 or 16, whenever. And, you know, three years later, we still don't have any clarity for that. So again, my opposition is just a matter of timing and not form or function.
As we're going down the road, I'll jump in here too. So a couple of quick questions for you. The road that we talked about where the private road was, where it leads back in to the existing apartment complex there, and this is probably a question for both you and Tony, that is going to be built to the Fisher spec of roads?
It's already built.
It's already, yeah, it's already built.
And it's built to our spec?
Correct.
Okay, it is. So when and if we take that over as a private road, if we so choose to do that, we won't have to go rebuild the road to our standards?
We shouldn't have to, we might need some additional right-of-way. They're looking, engineering is looking at what our standards would be, but the construction of the road complies with our current standards.
I would just make sure that if the project does move forward, that it's in compliance every way. So we don't have to go back and redo that since we're going down that path now. So that's one of the things that I would kind of put on that, Tony, is to make sure that is in full compliance with anything we have to do there to make sure we're able to accept it in there should we choose to. That's number one. And then Steve, I can't remember if we talked about any buffering along 37 or not. I'm sure there is some buffering there, right?
There's some, there's landscape, there's also a sound wall too, which Tony mentioned, you know, and, go ahead.
No, I'm with you. I don't know necessarily we need a sound wall, but okay, you know.
It just affects the viability as well of commercial development to have a wall in front of your buildings along the state highway.
I don't disagree. So I'm actually in agreement with Brad and I know Brad's going to, you know, settle down, it's all good. The, this parcel in particular is a stranded parcel and I'm anxious to hear my friend Rich talk about that and David as well as in the development worlds that they live in. This parcel is very strained and it's going to continue to be strained. 37, we will have no, and correct me if I'm wrong Scott, we're not going to be able to punch ingress egress wholly 37 because it's going back to the state. So you'd have to go back to the state to get permission to cut, you know, new entry points into commercials and...
It's designed as an interstate.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, having retail traffic up along that corridor is not going to happen. You know, you're barely able to get a car lot over there if you were lucky. Go ahead, Tony.
Well, and I just want to add, since this road was already constructed, the apartment complex was built before we had, oh, sorry. The apartment complex was built before we had connectivity standards in place. So with the built apartments, if they got approved, they can connect to their development because they're willing to. If this becomes a commercial development, there won't be that connection. We can't require that connection because the apartments were already built before connectivity was in place. There's no access easements or rights to that. So the fact that if they develop it and they own control both, they can allow access through that we would obviously accept, but I just want to clarify, with commercial, we won't get access to the south for those apartments to go to that way without going around what Mr. Harden showed.
Yeah, correct. And when Steve and I talked about it, you know, that was one of the major things I looked at, not only the particular parcel and the fact that we're going to relinquish that road back to the state, we're going to really have no choice on what we can do with ingress egress there, making it interstate as the mayor said, as you go through, along with the continued viability which needs to enhance that retail center below because we've watched a number of businesses turn over there. I think Cecilia, you at one point were very worried, I think you had a friend or maybe even one of your daughters was working at that establishment over there and just wasn't getting the traffic, right? Part of the traffic is logistics getting in and out of there. By creating that many more apartments and L feet that can then drive without hitting 37 to get down there is going to improve the viability of all those particular projects down there, which in my mind is paramount. And as Councilman DeReeber pointed out, we're asking for zero incentive here. There is zero incentive here. And you're not, that parcel will sit, if we don't let this particular project go forward, this parcel is going to sit for a five-plus-year status without being on the tax rolls, without offering anything to the city in terms of new tax dollars as well as new residents, which are going to continue to feed our district, what used to be called, whatever we used to call it. The yard, right now called the district. See, I've gotten used to calling it the district now, it's amazing. The, you know, to all those particular things, getting more people in the city, which are going to continue to feed the economic development which we're doing, I think is absolutely paramount. And again, I appreciate all the comments made by council, but I think you might be a little short-sighted here on taking a look at what is really going to be vital and what can happen there if we don't do this project. Because if we don't do the project, you've got a piece of bare ground for a long time in my opinion. And again, I appreciate all the comments there, I am fully supportive of it. I love the fact that we can get access through there. Again, I love the fact that it's a stranded parcel that you've found a use for and again, I think it's a vital importance for us to absolutely take a hard consideration and look in forward to this project moving forward.
Well, I will weigh in and I think unfortunately, the petitioner is learning that there is a lot of sensitivity about multifamily development. There's been a lot of that in Fishers and so I think that's part of the concern that's being voiced. But I do want to echo from a commercial development standpoint, at least from my experience, and I can also speak to some specific uses along the corridor in that area and just, you know, how challenged they are from a business standpoint. If this isn't developed as multifamily, I think if, this is my personal opinion, but from my experience in real estate, I believe retail is not viable there. I just don't see it and I'll explain why in a little bit here further. But I do think the only thing that could be viable from a commercial standpoint is office or, you know, something less, like some sort of flex industrial, things like that. Now, I don't know, we'd have to question whether that, you know, latter use, the flex industrial might be appropriate, but even office is a challenge. My personal feeling is that the absorption that will occur will more likely occur first at the 106th Street and the available land there. And I think we heard earlier tonight about what opportunities are there for some small businesses and I think that's wonderful. But, you know, I will speak specifically to some of the challenges and people may know this, but the Zaxby's there has struggled from the get-go. It is on the market, the owner of the business has constructed a, what I will call a fictitious lease to take to the investment community to sell it. I mean, basically increased the rent to a point that it's probably not viable, but I know they are struggling. The Verizon has struggled. The Ram that was located just to the south went out of business, it was on the market for two years, it's now being redeveloped for what's now going to be a dental office and some other sorts of uses. But quite frankly, I don't think any sort of restaurant or destination use like that is viable in that area. And so while I appreciate the concern that's voiced and I think part of this is the multifamily concerns that exist here, I look at it as much too from, okay, what is the highest and best use? And I believe this is an example where I'm not wild about multifamily, just for the record, continuing. But I think this is an example that the site justifies it. And the last thing that I wanted to point out is, you know, really purely the economics behind this, we are about what, 15 years into the TIF bond or so for this project?
Oh, well, yes, O and B is, we're not responsible.
Well, I understand that, but after another 10 years, the tax revenues that are generating...
That are all come back on.
That have come back to us. So I think that's part of the consideration that I would take into account is, you know, are we more likely to realize, you know, in this five-to-10-year period, something else when we know that, I mean, this quite frankly is going to generate more taxes out of a project like this? I did a rough rule of thumb, if it's 17 million at 2%, you know, that's 340, I think you referenced, you know, 350, I think you're accurate. I don't see us matching that. So those are all factors for me that, you know, continue to get my support, so I'm going to be supportive of it. be supportive of it.
David? Any further?
No.
All right. Any further comments, questions from...
Ray, Rich, just a moment please, if I could, just add something. So the, the challenge for a local business in hearing what we're hearing tonight is, it's a challenge because, and I know that we have no longer doing first readings, I understand that may change. But I, you know, we could hear what people's comments were. A lot of them were timing, we, let's study this. And what we don't wanna do is have a, have a no vote tonight where it's, there's no reason to. This is a quality developer, a longtime investor in the community. They wanna do, they wanna fit hand in glove with what the community wants to see. What I, what we'd like to do is to go ahead and have a continuance tonight. Let's not put a vote to everybody. We heard the comments. Let us decide whether we wanna withdraw to allow the opportunity, if the, the city council believes there's need for additional study. This is absolutely right. I chaired the future land use committee that Eric was on and Rich was on, that identified a handful of areas. We've maybe got ahead of ourselves by doing the analysis and a lot of the study internal with the city, but let's take a, what we like to do is let's take a pause. And if that's the, the will I'm hearing tonight with the folks that spoke, let's not put a, besmirk the project with a negative vote. Let us continue it, decide whether to withdraw before we, before January, and which, whatever way to do it, is let's, mayor, give it the, the special study that it, it called for to answer the questions that we heard tonight. So that would be our request. That's be, would be the will of the council.
Do we need to make a motion?
I'll, I'll make that motion.
Okay. Motion to continue by Todd.
Second.
Second by Eric.
If, if we continue, if we take a vote and the vote is split vote and it goes no, what happens next? Is it dead? They couldn't bring it back in future deal?
You have to have a majority vote one way or the other. And if there's no action taken after ninety days of the certification and the favorable recommendation, it becomes approved. So the, this is for, you know, you'd have to, if you want, if the majority is to vote it down, you have to vote it down negatively with a majority vote prior to the ninety-day expiration, and we're not anywhere near that.
So to Steve's point, we, the planning commission just met when, last week?
December fourth.
So it's ninety days from the time the planning commission approved that, for you all to make your decision before the planning commission's favorable recommendation becomes law. So if we continue to the next meeting, you're gonna have plenty of time to consider the continuance.
We'll give a report by then what we're doing one way or another.
Any further comments, questions? So motion by Todd, second by Eric, to continue. All in favor?
Aye.
Post?
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Item eighteen. Tony?
Tony, is this a voluntary annexation?
It is voluntary annexation, but it is first and second reading and a public hearing. So with that, if you wanna open the public hearing, I'll say back no.
Yeah, you should open up the public hearing.
All right. Well, go ahead and open it to the public hearing. If there's any, if there are any members of the public who wish to speak, please come forward, state your name and record for the, uh, record. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Motion?
Motion for first and second reading.
That's it, right?
Yep.
First and second. Okay. Very good. Thank you. Item nineteen.
Okay, thank you. Then the last item I have is an update to the beekeeping ordinance that was just approved this summer based on some state law. So just to highlight briefly again, a state law was passed the end of May stating that no jurisdiction within Indiana could prohibit beekeeping within residential areas, which was the position that we had taken in our previous code. So based on that, the state law that passed said you can only lo, only regulate the location and the number of hives, and that's pretty much the only thing, that's the only thing you can do. The ordinance we adopted had several other standards in there that went beyond that, and we had some comments from a resident who is a beekeeper here in Fishers, who met with Councilmember Block and myself, expressed some concerns about the ordinance, how it violates state law. So we did make some revisions. And the new standards that are in your ordinance really just regulate the number of hives, the location of them. And then there's a list of other standards in there that are really just recommendations as best practices, but it's not anything we can force. So it just says highly suggest that you do this. If, if, for example, if like the beehives are visible from a sidewalk, we recommend that you put a fence around your property or some vegetation. We can only recommend it, we can't require it, because that's not part of the state law. So with that, it was presented to the planning commission. There was overall support. The vote did go seven to one. We did have a resident or planning commission member who has a five-acre property who felt that the ordinance would limit them only to eight hives without a variance, and there was a concern about that and felt like there should be more hives for larger properties. I expressed the concern of the planning commission that these standards would apply to ninety percent of the city, which is mostly now a developed, urbanized community of suburban homes and not necessarily all five acres. So we would recommend that in those cases, they would, if it's for residential purposes only, they could go to the BZA. If it's agriculture, they're actually exempt anyways, and they could have more hives as an ag use. But for a larger property, we just recommended a BZA and that this still applies to the majority of the city. And with that, it was approved seven to one.
But again, Tony, the, the metrics for the number, that's based on the state law. We're adhering to what the state law is, right?
So the state law just says we have to allow a property to have them in general. The metrics we put in there were some standards.